I put in that.
What you said in the safe, you have to say it.
That's Jerry Monahan, so.
Jerry Monahan.
I know.
That's why it's right here on the boats.
And I think that was their last time.
Violence.
And they're so loud.
Yes. She already drafted it.
It is now by authority, called speaking order. Dr. Broler, yes, today.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, my goodness. Start with a pledge, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. As a consent agenda, would you, I'm sorry, call the roll, please?
Mayor, Mayor Winkie.
Present.
Mr. Iago.
Present.
Mr. Fulton.
Here.
Mr. Nordak.
Present.
Mr. Wilhelm.
Present.
Ms. Patterson.
Present.
We have a part.
And we have visitors.
Jane.
Eric Peters, Oregon State.
I'm young, drinker, eleven, not a court.
Sean Austin, four fourteen Maine.
You, on the hand.
Jules Murray, two four three three Black Palm Lane.
Terry Munson, one seven zero Corral South.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have Sarah Fisher. Is she here? Sarah Fisher, family crisis. Your name's on the board up there. And who else, an attorney, anybody else? Nope, guess not. Okay, very good. And we have a consent agenda in front of us. Will I accept the motion to approve? Make the motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
Only thing I have is, Aaron, a couple of things like that. That I had questions on, but I think we can discuss that at a budget meeting. Actually, it's just, it's nothing more inaccurate. It's just negative a little more here for a little guy like me. But I think that's all that's going on. Everything else, fine.
Right. Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. There is no old business. First item A is a consideration request to approve a domestic violence awareness month proclamation. If this is your packet, if you read it, I can read it, or we can just get a motion to approve it. They do this every year. So, is there a motion to approve, or do you want me to read it?
Usually they read it.
Whereas, one in every four women and one in every seven men will experience domestic violence during their lifetime, whereas approximately fifteen point five million children are exposed to domestic violence each year. Whereas, when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on a victim that also leave a mark on the family, friends, and the community at large, whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confirmed or confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and social barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. Whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to its systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, whereas victims should have health, find compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law, whereas victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, emergency, and transitional housing, and other supportive services so they can't escape the cycle of abuse. Whereas, important partnerships have been formed among criminal and juvenile justice systems, agencies, healthcare providers, allied health professionals, and victim services to assist victims of domestic violence in their, in their families, whereas we dedicate ourselves to protecting vulnerable members of our community, whereas West Cliff has a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, address its brutal and destructive efforts, and make any domestic violence a local priority. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that West Cliff City Council members do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to be actively, to actively support the Family Crisis Services' work towards the elimination of domestic violence. The foregoing resolution was duly adopted at the regular meeting of the City Council of Town West Cliff, Santa Colorado on twenty first day of October, two thousand twenty five, by the following vote. I made a motion to approve. I'll second.
The mayor?
I made a motion to approve, and you second it. Further discussion?
The only questions I have, and Aaron, did Sarah provide this for us?
Yes.
Okay. Only thing I have is, is, in the very first whereas is, you know, one in four women and one in seven men, and then later on, it says right in the same sentence, is, is her. I think it should be her and kids. Okay, I can add that. Okay, so that way everybody's covered. And then, and then the last whereas where it says, oh, we have a moral obligation, how can we as a town, I mean, we support it, I definitely support it, but I just, maybe that's for Alan to help us with. Somebody could say that, oh, the town's not doing enough. I just don't know.
Well, isn't there a, this came from Canyon City, didn't it, would you say? There's an organization.
They drafted it, Family Crisis.
There's a Family Crisis Center in Canyon City. There's not one here.
Right.
So, and, you know, takes resources to do that. So I guess, as a town, as members of this board, we can be cognizant of the fact that this goes on, and I suppose refer them, if we ever, whatever, to the sheriff's department.
And maybe it could be, well, a chance, one of our own town employees would be doing something that we have to come forward, I would guess.
Say again, Bob?
I say, maybe it's what we, in reference to Alan, maybe you could help me on this, is, if it's just one of our town staff and being neglected, if we know about it.
Yeah, so, you know what, Bob?
Yeah.
Then we should, I don't know, if you refer the employee to the sheriff, or you just contact that the sheriff directly, Alan could advise us on it.
Alex.
Uh, yeah, it's Alex, sorry. Is the question if this document is going to create an obligation on behalf of the town employees to report, or are you asking if that legal obligation already exists? I guess I'm a little unclear on the question.
Right.
I'm just saying, the only thing I'd say, Alex, is, 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 I mean, unlikely for any event, something happens, could they somehow come back against the town, saying, you neglected this, and we're staying.
So it's my, oh, go ahead, sorry about that.
Because we were going to say it here, that we're, we're very supportive and all that, so.
Well, I think that essentially what this document does, it highlights everything, but it's, all it does in the end, it said, be resolved that October is Domestic Violence Month. Okay. We're on it.
Yeah. There's not, oh, sorry about that. There, there's just not really a path for a proclamation to create a legally binding requirement for this sort of reporting. So, I would say it is extremely, I mean, of course, you can never say that no one would ever file any lawsuit, but I would find it extremely unlikely that they would be able to win a lawsuit over something like that.
Right. Thank you. And then the last, last thing, Paul, excuse me, is, you know, we're not, we're not city council, we're board, town board, or town trustees.
Well, we can.
I mean, I can have her change this.
We can change that.
Same one we do every year.
Okay, got you. Well, just again, we're not, we're not a city council, uh, city.
Any other ways you want to lengthen the meeting, Bob?
I just, I read it, Paul.
Well, I read it too. All right, very good. Any further discussion? So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Both motion carries. Now, next item. Report on farmers market, Terry, want to give us a report?
I'm her emotional support.
I'm Jules Murray, and I am the twenty twenty five, and probably the twenty twenty six Farmers Market Manager, and we want to just give you a report of how it went for us this summer, and then we also have a request, and I have copies of this sort of summarize to give to you at the end. So we started out with twenty-two vendors in the center of the park and also along the edges in the parking areas, and we ended with, I think we had twelve vendors the very last day of the park, and several of the vendors, kids had gone back to school and their schedules changed, so it got a little smaller. Our total sales ended just over a hundred and twenty-six thousand for the four-month period, and that, those sales represented an increase of twenty-six percent over twenty twenty-four, and the town of West Cliff received roughly thirty-eight hundred in sales tax revenue. We, we, overall, I was hired in mid-August, so I was really with the market through September, and what I saw were a lot of community members shopping there, the access to being in the center of town like that, in that beautiful park with that amazing grass, and we had some, like Stacy, fight from the constellation, she bought her produce there, she came, filled bags, and the vendors benefited, the customers benefited, people made money, they sold out some days, if you've been to the market, Labrador often sold out, we had a new pastry maker, she had sort of a Swedish flair, and she, one day, I think she did eight hundred, sold everything that she had, and I mean, I couldn't wait for her to set up so I could have a treat. But we had bootleggers tell us that they experienced more traffic, people around us definitely had, you know, more happening on Friday because of that central location. I posted on social media throughout September, we did a lot of live videos, we increased our fans and followers by like a massive percentage, sixteen thousand impressions just in the month of September. We just, I was really focused like on letting people know about the bread, or about the mushrooms, or anything that they were really promoting, and it was, it was pretty fascinating. The vendors have a heart for what they're doing, and they're very eager to share it, I think, with people in town. We have more plans for twenty twenty-six. I've been in marketing a long time, and I want to do some more things to bring more people in, and more consistent, keep more vendors throughout the season, and so I'll also always be open to your ideas, as the board has a lot of ideas, we're trying to kind of work on that through the winter. And in addition to our success, we do want to put it out there that we are hoping to get a commitment from you all that we can maintain having the market at Just Price Memorial Park for the next three years. It's challenging for us to not know where we're going, we already have inquiries about the market for next year, and it's hard for us to give a commitment unless we're really sure we have a commitment. We feel like it's win-win for everybody. I mean, even though I'm new, I've seen the numbers, it's helping the town, there's finances that are going on, we had a tiny profit this year, we have bigger plans for next year, and so that growth really depends on if we can talk to new vendors now and say, you know, that, that, this is what we're going to be, this is the cost, and, and there's just this clarity, I think we all really need that clarity right now. So we'd like you to consider that request to go for three years, and I'm happy to give you all a copy of this summary, and our names are all on there, you'll also need that.
The, I'm just now speaking as one member of the board, but I, you know, the, the farmer's market has been there except for the time we were rebuilding the park, it's been there since, and my members forever, I mean, it's not forever, but since you started the farmer's market. We, and in my opinion, continuing the market there will be up to the market. I mean, if you, if your, if it deteriorates, if we see problems that aren't remedied, et cetera, then we might want to think second about it, you know, second time about it, as far as the board's concerned. The parks, we have to do some work on the park this year, and there's some trees that have to come down and be replanted, but basically, I think that, that as far as I'm concerned, as long as you guys are holding up your end of the bargain in terms of quality, you got plenty of vendors, maybe it'll fall apart on its own if you don't have enough vendors, but you're there to stay, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about what to do with the other boards. Chris, take.
My, I guess I would want to hear from Neil and make sure everything was good with Neil, and make sure that any trees that, any repair that has been in the park wouldn't negatively impact the farmer's market, but could we put it on the agenda for November to make a motion to keep it there for three years?
Sure, I guess we could do that. We were just about at the limit of the footprint now, we would actually have to go back further into that parking area where the electric vehicle charging stations are, if they need more room, so.
Well.
And, and I know that Neil has blocked off certain areas of the grass so it doesn't get trombled, trampled, so that, that's been pretty well taken care of, and the trees are down. I didn't see that. I didn't even know about it, because somebody said some.
I'll put it on the members' agenda.
Question, Jules, is, would that help you all to have a three-year commitment from the town for, for your vendors?
I feel it is. I, I even received an email today from someone, one of the vendors, who said, really need to stress how important this is, because she knows she has a place to go every time. I think, I think that's important to her, and, and other people have said the same thing, they just want to be sure. It's like, any, any farmer's market is a launchpad for a lot of new businesses, and, you know, there's some companies now that are selling in places where they'll make an easy sale in an hour versus being at a farmer's market for six hours or something, like West Cliff Cheese Company, for instance. They have a much bigger wholesale market now, but their launchpad came from these farmer's markets. They don't just come to West Cliff, they go a lot of places.
So, so if we give you the commitment, then you can commit to the vendor, say, hey, as long as you do your thing. I agree with Paul, and we could have an agreement that says that should it fall down, you know, in the future, then, then, yeah, you're not, you can't sublet it to someone else or something.
Yeah, I have some plans. I'd like to see it grow. I have, I have some, I'm, I'm fleshing a little, maybe, I have some ideas, and the board has, and they haven't really had someone, you know, to go out and do that, and I'm not a vendor, I'm, that's what I'm doing, and so just things like, I want to see every vendor be willing to do a giveaway, so the people who are going to sign up this year, I don't know that we need more space, we need a deeper commitment.
The, also, you need to be aware of the sidewalk, you know, that they, that one person tried to set up there on the sidewalk, and he completely blocked the whole sidewalk, so they need to make sure that they don't set up on the.
Right, I did, I did hear about that.
Oh, okay, that was the first day.
Numerous times.
Well, I think it was the first or second time now, maybe.
It is tight up there, so we do need those spaces on the side. The vendors, Prairie Grass Designs has a trailer they bring in, there may be others that do fit in the space, but they really need that space, and then the parking area along the back, they haven't, we didn't push into the electric car area, did we, charging area?
No, but that's about the only place you have left.
Right, right. But again, we want to re, sort of just look at how we've been running it and trying to think.
It was, it was, it was run quite well.
Yeah, yeah.
First, after the first, first weekend, you know.
There were some bumps, and we had some hiccups, and we appreciate you guys giving us some grace and some flexibility, because like we said, those first couple of markets are always, everybody's coming and everybody's packing in, and then after those first few markets, it fills us out, and then July happens, and that's a whole nother element of grace that everybody needs. But I think one thing I just thought of, ultimately, it is the town of West Cliff's Park, we worked, I think we worked really well on a vendor layout and map, and we stuck to that as much as we possibly could. A request I have moving forward is if we do, are granted, you know, this three-year commitment, at some point in, end of August, maybe, a stadium bleacher was put in the park. It was like a stadium bleacher, it was like a three-tier metal bleacher, stadium bleacher.
In the walkway, and we were trying to protect.
But it took up a vendor spot, and so if we could just have more communication both ways of, hey, we're going to add more seating, so we have a heads up of where we need to do things.
Might ask Neil, because I have no idea.
We had no idea. He may not even know.
Yeah, you know, you had one of those show up, SJO, just all of a sudden, here's a set of bleachers. The heck can we do with these?
Huh, okay.
Anyway, I think, I thought the, I thought the layout was very efficient, and it was better than it was before, before we redid it. I know you were down below and so forth and so on, so I was, I was pleased. I don't know if the vendor community was pleased. I have, now, this is something you'd really, you'd have to bring back to us, but what if, just what if, okay, guys? Sorry, what if we did a thing where bootleggers could sell beer out there, just put up, set the bar?
I kind of feel like we'd like coffee and tea in the morning, and we haven't found a vendor to do that.
Beer.
I know.
Drunk people spend that.
You got, you got restrictions.
No, see, you, you just, well, all of a sudden, you find, well, you know, but, but I mean, you got to stop and think, you know, you've got those, you know, well, you, you can explain the liquor license better than, than, than I could.
This is an idea, and easiest thing for.
This is an idea and easiest thing for anybody to do is say no.
When I would say no real quick.
Anyway, I thought the music was good, that was an audition.
Yeah, we have ideas around that because the energy goes down when the music ends. So we're just looking at some kind of boombox speaker sort of thing. We can tune into some music and keep that happening and maybe even before they get set up. Because it does add to the ambiance having that music.
Okay, good.
So ideas.
What time does everyone start setting up in the morning?
They're early. What I saw in September is Lovadora, the bread company, that he was set up by 6:30, just ready to go.
Because it would really be an opportunity for our local, whether it's breakfast providers, coffee providers, to maybe set something up close down there to make it easier. I think there's definitely some opportunity for our local businesses to step up if they wanted to. I just always think it'd be nice for someone to run around selling burritos during the car show because those guys set up so early and they were always wanting to know, where can I get breakfast? It's like.
Right.
Breakfast came to them, they'd probably be really happy.
You're right, we are without lunch for most of the day. I was hungry while I was there. But there, there's some thoughts around, I was at Sugar Lump today and I thought, you know, why aren't they, and I didn't bring it up then, but I thought about it, like providing urns of coffee so that they come in the morning and they're really there. And so, yeah, we're.
That's your job.
Just have to find the gaps. That's what I'm always looking for is what's missing, right? And I don't even drink coffee, but I know it's missing. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for.
We'll see you in November.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Good job. All right, I don't see a consideration request to fill a vacant trustee seat. We have two applications. And we have not interviewed them. We know Kit, of course, but we don't know the other gentleman, but I think we're going to have to do that. And then we'll finalize, put on the agenda for November, okay?
Is that something that we'll do as an interview as a board or if we just have two board members interview?
I think the mayor and the mayor pro temp should do it. And we'll, if you're going in here, and you're right on the edge on that too.
Isn't it on the agenda? Isn't it an agenda?
It's on the agenda. Anyway, but we'll interview them and otherwise it's got to be a big meeting, okay? It's got to be scheduled and the town's welcome and so forth. So just two, we can interview them and, and make a recommendation to the board. How does that fit with you guys?
That's the way I was put on. I'm sorry, I was interviewed filling out vacant seat. Do you have to give the pen back?
You can't have a pen until you're.
Don't give him a red pen. I could call you, Kit, to throw out some names at times.
It's fine, it's fine.
So we'll try to get.
Who's seat is being filled?
Martin Bowsk, he resigned.
For his set reasons.
Okay, unless you don't want to do it that way.
I think that's, I mean, if, it's just if everybody else is fine with that. I mean, otherwise it's a whole meeting and that, that's fine too, but it's just what everyone else wants to do.
We, well, reading the resumes because we have enough information at this point. Is it appropriate to vote on tonight if we so chose?
I thought we could, but.
We do have resumes, but I just feel kind of bad because like, yes, we all know Kit, but we, I don't know if any of us know or maybe one of us knows the guy on 60. So I would, I would want to, I mean, if you guys all know him and you feel comfortable voting, then we should vote, but I.
It's on the agenda so we can vote. So, Bob?
Well, my, my thoughts are, is, I've been, maybe others too, but I've been apprehended for quite a while. But I've been experiencing it and, and I think like myself, I mean, I spent years on the planning commission to get it ready and all that. And, and the other gentleman, I just saw him walking up here tonight. And so, and I think maybe, do we have any spots on, on the planning?
Not right now.
Not right now? Anyway, that's only, that's only two cents, so I would love to have.
So are you making a motion then? Because I think you could.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I move that we ask Mr. Kishai to join our trust, board and trustee.
I'll second that. Been moved in second discussion. Now, hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're on the board. You can have a tension. We have to swear you in. I don't know, it's an hour after the board being in what? We don't even have a place for you, Kit.
He can't, yeah, he can't participate in this meeting and so he should be sworn in before the next meeting.
All right, very good. Congratulations, I was going to ask you for some money.
Also, also no.
I already gave Bob some money. Anyway, okay, welcome, welcome.
Didn't Twitter about.
Fortunately you have experience in, in government, so that's good. All right. Item D, consideration request to appoint Kristi Patterson as the mayor pro town. I'm sorry?
What's my last name? What's my last name?
I'm sorry?
What's Kristi's last name?
Allison.
I thought you said Madison.
So that's because these people were talking. This was supposed to be a quick meeting. Anyway, so we made a motion, a motion is required. I make a motion to appoint Kristi Patterson as mayor pro town.
I'll second.
Moved in second discussion. It's whispering. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kristi Patterson is mayor pro town.
Thanks, Kristi.
And welcome. Here's a text by Kristi Patterson, Garland Research on Dark Skies ordinances. Kristi?
Well, I went through all of the communities that are dark skies, communities in the dark skies website. And I think there's forty now and of those thirty-one are under a population of twelve thousand. So I just, because I figured I'd need to put a threshold that was reasonable for our community to look at. And then I went through and I made, I made some notes about the different, some of, I didn't do notes on every single one, but I put this grid together of things that, I mean, I guess that I felt were important. I also had Aaron, I believe, sent you guys all the ordinances and the websites associated with that so you knew where I was getting the information. But I, I wanted to go like the location, the population, the year they were designated, which I guess that doesn't even really matter. And things that they had in their ordinances or that all, you know, did they have definitions? Did they have a separate policy for commercial? So there, there's just a lot of information here, which I hope everyone got a chance to look at. I will say, and I said it in my notes here, my personal favorite was the dripping springs, Texas. It was very clear. It had pictures of the different types of lighting, lights that are approved. It had pictures of like, what is, you know, twenty-eight hundred Kelvin, what is three thousand Kelvin, what is four thousand Kelvin? Because I think those are really abstract concepts for the general person trying to understand. Like, I know I have to be compliant, but I don't know what all these words mean. And I don't know if anybody else has any opinions on these, if we want to just think about things we would maybe like to see in the ordinance and throw it to the attorney to work on or how that should be done. But if you guys want me to go back and find out more information, I can. There were a couple of communities that their ordinances were not online. And, and one community in Michigan, I think, I called and I said, do you, where can I find your dark skies ordinance? And they go, well, we don't really have an ordinance. And I'm like, you're a dark skies community, how can you not have an ordinance? And they said, well, we just do it to be nice for our neighbors. And so I don't know if they're just like a bedroom community of a larger city or what, but I was like, okay, didn't know that that was a thing. And then also found that there were some communities that are in California that are governed by the county, mostly that was in, close to San Diego. So that, that ordinance encompassed a few different communities. But I just think that of everything I've found, our ordinance is the lightest, if you will, as far as information. And, and I've been struggling with this since I was working at this, this less than, I had issues myself because it's like, I know I need to be compliant and I know I'm not and I don't know how to do it. And so I figure if I'm having that problem, a lot of other people are having that problem. I know that there's kind of an issue with the rodeo grounds and, you know, it might be, I think it's appropriate to get together, maybe not everybody in the same room, but I know Bob and I had kind of been delegated to maybe get together with, talk with dark skies and also talk with the rodeo grounds and maybe see what kind of things they would like to see in the ordinance. Since that's like our big, you know, we have, the rodeo grounds are a big, big event location, I guess. And even if the rodeo grounds, even if the rodeo went somewhere else, that property is definitely designed for, for events of some sort. So another thing I saw was that a lot of the communities that became dark skies communities, they gave their businesses a sunset, if you will, that they had to become compliant within five years. That was kind of the longest I saw. So it wasn't just like, I, I didn't see a lot of communities that were, oh, you're grandfathered in until, you know, your property changes hands or something. It was five years, within five years, you must become compliant with the ordinance. And then also it was real clear, if a property had over fifty percent, their fifty percent rebuild or remodel, then they would have to become compliant. If the property changed hands, they have to become compliant. So, but the big one was that you don't get to just sit out here and be grandfathered in indefinitely. You had to become compliant. So that's what I found. I did see a lot of talk about lumens per net acre, and I don't want to know what that means, but I saw it, I saw it a lot, so I wrote it. I thought, well, that must be important. And I meant to kind of research that a little bit more before I came to this meeting and it didn't happen. But maybe Chuck probably already knows what that means.
Well, it's, it's a very, I won't say abstract, but it's a very vague term on how to measure the lights. During the, the last, course of the last year, I was put in contact with a lighting engineer out of Carter Springs. And he educated me tremendously on how light should be measured. You know, you can't just walk out and put a light in the, a measurement device under a light because there's lots of different, there's a primary illumination field, there's a secondary illumination field, and then there's light spillage and all this stuff. And so we learned a lot of that and it was applied to the ACE lights down there. And the biggest, let's put our town, let's say something like one point one-six lumens per square foot. It doesn't say how far away from the light source that that is, right? So you, if you just read it, you're like, well, does that mean the primary light field or the secondary light field or spillage? So we took it to mean as the primary. What, what are they primarily trying to illuminate, right? So, there is, there is some things in our lighting code that, there's a couple of places where we talk about watts and lumens and kelvin and stuff like that. And that should be all standardized. Shouldn't be any talk about a hundred watt bulbs. It should talk, should be all lumens. Nobody knew what lumens were, you know, as far as the common public, nobody had a clue what a lumen was eight years ago. And with the advent of all our, most of our incandescent bulbs have all turned into LEDs and that's happened over the la, the course of the last about eight, eight to ten years. And, but now if you pick up a package of light bulbs, almost every single one of them will tell you that, okay, this many lumens is, is equivalent to an incandescent bulb of seventy-five watts or a hundred watts. Because the wattage is just a consumption of power. It's not a, a amount of how much light it puts out. And then the kelvin measurement, that was never important because everybody had incandescent bulbs. If you're driving down the highway at night and you see one of these vehicles coming at you with these extremely white, bright lights that are like, oh my God, those are high kelvin. Those are probably anywhere from five to eight thousand kelvin. Or then you see bright behind that guy, an old F-150 with incandescent headlights on. They're probably around thirty-eight hundred to four thousand kelvin. So it's, it's, I, I usually explain it as the harshness of the light, okay? Because that's, that's some, that's, my wife understood harshness of light, not temperature, right? But you, with the advent of all the LED lights, you can see that they're harsh. And I hate to say it, Town West Cliff has one of the harshest lights in town. That's at the, is that the Memorial Hermann Park? There's a Hermann part, the light outside the gazebo on Hermann Park has got three LEDs that are just.
Super bright.
Super bright. And, yeah. The, the biggest, oh, and I want to say another little thing about the dark skies community. When West Cliff attained dark sky community, there were hard and fast rules by the dark sky internationals. You have to, you had to meet so, you had to go out and measure light, overall light in the night sky. And the town had to, they had to meet a threshold, okay? Well, in about 2024, international dark sky community took that, took that away. There is no more requirements of like that to be a dark sky community. Basically, right now, in order to become a dark sky community, all you have to do is say, we'll work hard to try to limit our lights. You do not have to have ordinances, you do not have to have anything, right? Whereas when, when Jim Bradburn and all the folks who got together and did that in two thousand and fif, fourteen and fifteen, they had to meet light requirements, they had to, they had to get town, get an ordinance with the town to minimize lights. So that's one of the reasons why Colorado has now grown to about sixteen or seventeen dark sky communities. And they were all within the last two to three years when they started relaxing that. If you want to become a dark sky park or a region or something like that, be certified as that, then you do have to have lighting measurements. That's one of the reasons why the, the move to try to put dark sky region all the way around the Sangre de Cristos has pretty much fizzled away is because Alamosa said, no, we're not, and a lumen are light. They wanted them to shut down neon lights and stuff on the main drag after midnight. And the businesses, no. So, and there was absolutely no wiggle room there, so. But that's, that's how that goes.
Well, Kristi, I think you've done a lot of work on this.
Yeah, thank you very much. It was quite a.
At dripping, dripping springs, Texas. Maybe we can begin with, with a document like that and use it as a model to, plus ours. And, and I'll take it and add some inquiries to what we think should be and then, and then give it to the attorney. What do you folks think about that?
Should we just do a workshop to?
I still think we should have a workshop.
Because there's a lot of, we can pick and choose.
Workshop.
I got a question now. West Cliff is the only one with, only town with the, an ordinance, right? The county does not have an ordinance.
So, so.
So, so it has an ordinance.
Is it the same as ours?
It's a little bit different and I have it in the, I did notate that in the graph here as well. They, the biggest difference is that they have definitions and we don't even have definite, you know, definitions are like.
Needs updating.
Lumen and all different terminology.
Well, what do you think about that approach? Well, what do you think about that approach? And when ladies, if we uh, um, if Christie, Christie would get us that ordinance if you think it's an appropriate one to start with as a, just as a starting point and then go from there. There may be other towns that we want to add things into, but uh, if we don't get started, we'll never finish, obviously. So.
We all have all the ordinances. I sent all of those to you in uh, PDFs, each, each community. So you should all have the dripping springs already. And if there's any others that you feel like, oh, I like this and that one. Um, since I spent all this time on the front end, like I can tell you, I really like the dripping springs personally. But you may like other stuff.
Sure. I, I, I've heard from several people that the, the main problem with ours was, like Christie said, we didn't have definitions of what this meant. Like a lumen, you can, you can go to Google and figure out what that is. But if we, if we explained, okay, so now this guy has to go out and with his phone, measure light. Maybe we need an explanation of how that is supposed to be done. So it's even amongst the, the area that somebody knows.
And in that, in that vein, Chuck, we're responsible, we have this ordinance, we're responsible for policing the town is. And so that would be Neil who did that. And uh, for example, on the south side of the grocery store by the loading dock, there's a really bright light.
Yeah, it just came into effect a few months ago.
And uh, there's one up at the uh, filling station up here, you know, the, the shell station. Um, but somebody's got to police it and uh, we have those lights in the park. That's, you know, it's on our property, we should be policing that and getting it fixed. Um, so, but we don't, we don't have anything to go with either. So in this, in this device, it's a different kind of device that we need to have to measure.
Well, there, there are a couple of little things.
Yeah, so we could buy those and so forth for, for Neil to, to do it. Because uh, um, we shouldn't, I asked Dark Skies to do it. It's, it's really a town responsibility. It's a town ordinance and we are the ones who are supposed to enforce our own ordinances.
I, I did also find that a lot of communities are referencing the IED standards. And so I thought, well, I will look those up and print those out. You can't just get those, like you have to pay for them. And unless someone is smarter than I, I, I mean, I tried a lot of different ways and couldn't get it. And I thought that might be something that we consider buying. I want to say it's like a hundred twenty dollars maybe, um, because maybe Neil or whoever would be doing code enforcement might need that. But a lot of places reference that. It's like, I don't know where to, or um, the international, what is it? Electrical, international electric, I don't remember, but I couldn't find. Yeah, and and you really, you have to join and all this to be able to.
Thousands of dollars.
Yeah, so I didn't think that was necessarily a fair thing to reference. I saw a lot of communities talk about businesses had to turn their lights down after a certain time. Like they had to go to fifty percent of the brightness after a certain time. And that kind of addressed the gas stations or maybe people that are loading, you know, like at the grocery store or something, but they had to turn it down so it wasn't expensive. And there were a lot of um, light ordinance or light time restrictions that sort of took effect like a noise ordinance would. So, but it was a light ordinance that started at ten or nine or eleven. And and then for the people that were maybe trying to be sneaky in the way of, oh, I'm going to start my event at ten, the ordinance is, I'm starting at nine forty-five, the ordinance doesn't take effect until ten. No, it was, your event had to start by maybe nine if the ordinance took effect at ten and it would be, um, you could finish out your event and that, then it had to shut down. So nobody could be like, I'm starting my event at nine fifty-nine so I can run to one in the morning or something.
Okay, so let's start with dripping springs or we'll get all the ordinances that were sent to us so we can start looking at those if we want. But I think, you know, at a minimum, let's start with dripping springs for this workshop.
Kristi, would you like to schedule a workshop or you want me to try to do it or?
I don't care. I mean, for me personally, I'm good on um, Thursday afternoons and Fridays right now are the best days for me. But I mean, we should, what works for everybody else. You guys are like more retired than I am, so.
Yeah.
Randy? Yeah, we still have the uh, the situation with the Saddle Club.
Well, you know, she's already talked about that.
I mean, we had an ordinance in place, it's just that the town didn't enforce it.
So let's uh, um, you know, Bob and Christie are going to try to get together with Saddle Club and Dark Skies and have some sort of a um, meeting of the minds.
Okay, we're going to try. We've been, you know, for the last year, been trying to get something going there.
Well, this is new, this, this effort on their part.
Yeah, this is new. Uh, but I mean, you know, we still, we still have to address that because that's going to be.
Why don't you just ask them why they haven't scheduled a meeting?
I, I, nobody will even talk to you.
I'm still.
Yeah.
They wouldn't talk to him, they wouldn't talk to Jim, they wouldn't talk to anybody.
So anyway, um, so the uh, that's where we are with that. And they've already talked to both entities already, at least with this idea to have a meeting. Okay?
Okay.
All right, anything else on this issue?
Do you want to schedule a workshop or do we need to wait to do that or?
May help if you guys talk to the Saddle Club first. You and Bob kind of have an idea before we have a workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, my schedule's kind of getting tight here. I got like two weeks left uh, before Thanksgiving. That's it.
And we need to schedule a budget workshop for all leaves.
So December's, it's looking, you know, about May for a week. I think it's going to take that much time anyway to get through all this. Here it is, the twenty-first of the month. So.
That, I personally think we got to get it done sooner and better, but, but there's a lot of things going on. But, but and one thing I noticed in one of the towns, I can't recall which one, but they had every, every two months, they would have like a, like a little workshop for the public to come in and learn about, about, remember that one?
Yes, I do.
That was really good because, you know, if you're building a house, I mean, and I don't, really technically with, you're building a new house and your porch light's supposed to be Dark Skies, right? But is anybody enforcing it?
There were, I saw some town websites that had a whole link or a whole page dedicated to Dark Skies and the history of, I mean, just a lot of information about why their community chose to do that and, and um, very informative. And I think a lot of people do kind of gravitate to a website, where can I find this information these days?
About three years ago, we were talking about working on the ordinance and I went and found a link. It was the same, I think it's the same link that Silver Cliff had referenced, except theirs doesn't work anymore. But the data is still out on the net. And my suggestion back then was perhaps to incorporate that into ours. Because it's, it's, it's an informative thing. I'll make sure and send that to you all.
Yeah. And also too, the electricians are the ones that really need to be educated because most homeowners, they don't, they don't even think about that. But the person, the electrician installing them says, well, you got to, this is not going to comply, you know? Here's a list of ones that you.
Some of they, some of them don't even know.
That's what I'm saying. Educate them.
And Dwight needs the, he's the one that does the inspections.
Not on, not on lights, we don't do electric.
Is it possible to ask a quick question so I don't get tomatoes thrown at me at the end of the meeting for asking this question?
Sure.
Um, it occurs to me that the town doesn't have a co-enforcement officer, but you guys said Neil would enforce this. Neil works like Monday through Friday, eight to five.
He works on Thursday, just he, he has four days a week.
Right, so you know, sometimes in a community, when you have to wait till your neighbors are so angry about something that they file a complaint, a lot of emotions start going back and forth. So perhaps a consideration or a question or however you want to, like if even one day a month, somebody were, had to have a part-time gig to, while it's dark, go and see what is in compliance or not in compliance, instead of waiting till the pot's boiling over. Now you have feuds between neighbors or community groups, something like that, instead of the man who works daytime hours.
In, in the past, before um, Caleb left, he would contact Dark Skies and ask them to go out and take a measurement, you know, at least see how many lumens that were being.
Well, and I, and I.
And that was, he would go out at night and do that and then report back.
But now you have two, you have, and it is in the special interest of Dark Skies. But now you again have community groups who are in policing, other community groups can create animosity. It's just a consideration. And if it's the town ordinance and having a town person be the one tracking instead of neighbors against neighbors or groups against groups, it's just a thought.
I thought we were um, working on maybe giving a part-time, another part-time person to help Dwight or a, a part-time zoning planning and zoning officer. And if that were the case, then wouldn't that kind of become that person's responsibility?
Very easily could. Okay, um, so we, we have a direction here. You guys are going to meet with Dark Skies and the Saddle Club. Okay? And we're going to schedule a workshop after that. We're going to start with dripping springs at a minimum. We've got that ordinance uh, that you, that we all have. And we'll get some other ones that you may want to uh, to reference as well or part of them or some of them, whatever. Okay? Then we'll have a workshop probably in December. Because you know, November, you got a holiday in there, you're gone quite a bit, et cetera, et cetera. Okay?
Get it figured out.
All right, next time, thank you. Um, consideration request to schedule board trustees meeting on December ninth rather than December sixteenth in order to adopt the budget. Um, Aaron, you want to explain, you want to explain that?
The budget has to be adopted by December fifteenth. So in the past, we've bumped up the meeting to the second Tuesday of the month. Otherwise, we will have to do a special meeting just to adopt the budget. So last year, we moved it up one week.
Yeah, we've done that before. So instead of the third Tuesday, it'll be the second Tuesday and uh, we'll just, we've done that.
Are we going to have another budget workshop before then?
Yeah.
We'll probably need to, I mean, realistically.
It's this Thursday, isn't it?
No, I haven't scheduled it yet.
Oh, we did.
So I have a motion to uh, schedule the uh, the center board of trustees meeting on the summer ninth. Make the motion.
Second.
Then move the second discussion. All whoever say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, and Aaron's will be scheduling the workshop for the budget. And you will be involved in that, even though you may not be sworn in here.
But I'll speak.
All right, um, consideration, consideration request to draft an ordinance addressing the uh, town's rights of way. Randy?
Yeah. Uh, we've had several people in the past that have built past their property line as far as fences, putting in trees, shrubs like that. A lot of it's where you would normally park. But then we've also had situations like right down here, HomeSmart. I bet that those signs are at least fifteen feet into the public right of way. And the same situation with the building across the road from there. I think that is probably within the town's right of way. We've also had some, I guess it's some residential's. I think we, we need, I mean, it's a town's property, they shouldn't be doing it anyway. But we don't have an ordinance. So I think we need to sit down and get an ordinance in place stating that uh, that you can't go past your property line with any permanent fixtures.
Well, trees.
Trees are, trees are going to be a permanent fixture, they're going to grow up.
Right, yeah, the big tree in my yard has been there forever, been there for a hundred years.
And, and, and on that, that, you're talking about the one out there in, in the right of way. That was probably planted by the, by the town. If you notice all up and down that street there, it's the same type of tree.
It's a little boy that, so I don't quite remember who planted it.
What's going on about it? Okay, you don't, the right there in your area, you have a curb and gutter.
Yes.
That's where your vehicle sits. The other place that I'm talking about, they have no curb and gutter. You got asphalt and then you've got a dirt area.
Right.
So if, if it comes up to where there's a, we put in curb and gutter and the tree is in.
Side down.
Our side.
Goes away.
Or going to interfere with where the curb and gutter should be, then it goes away. We had that situation, we had that situation last year.
Yep, on, on that, not pow, on pow.
Yeah, yeah. And it turned out they trimmed up, they trimmed up the tree and everybody, got everything, everybody finally settled down. It took a little while.
But the Episcopal Church lost their big askings, so we did Rosita.
We, we have Second Street where uh, uh, Rozansky lives. Well, our road is in her right of way, on her property.
Oh, really?
Because people, over the years before she put the house there, they kept making that turn to go west, making that turn to go west and they.
That's why on Hermann?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember that.
That street is on her property.
Yeah, that street was on her property, yeah.
So, um, well, we don't, I guess we, what we have to decide is, well, we'll let um, the uh, attorney do this and we'll say, um, are you familiar with uh, town rights of way um, ordinances?
Yes, and I wanted to point out that there's already an excavation ordinance and a sidewalk ordinance. So was hoping that there might be a little more clarity about what the town is interested in actually addressing or if you think there are some structural issues with those ordinances as they exist. Because I, I think in particular, if we're talking about someone putting something up to the property line that's obstructing the sidewalk or is otherwise, you know, an excavation or a construction that would be in the public right of way, you probably already do have an ordinance that could address that. Um, so, you know, I want to make sure that I understand, you know, what we're looking for here. And if you want me to, you know, pull together what you already have on the books and bring that, you know, we can do that as well. I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page.
Well, we also have some, some planners that have been put up on Main Street uh, at that one art gallery. That's in the city right of way, they're permanent fixtures, so, you know, but it doesn't impede the uh, the pedestrian traffic. So it's going to be one of those things, we're just going to, we're just going to have to look and say, okay, if you don't have a curb and gutter in, doesn't mean you go all the way out to the asphalt, you know, and.
Or is it that you run the risk if you go all the way out to the asphalt that if we ever do put curb and gutter in, it goes away? And that's what happened at Fifth and Rosita back when we originally did the um, had the TAB grant around two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen?
Bad survey and probably. Little bit of just uh, the wording used, you know, a right of way often implies that you don't own the land, you just have a right to use it. But the town actually owns their streets. And the street is from property line to property line. And in most circumstances, the, you have the property line, sidewalk, and then there's a space and then the curb face and, and the driven surface or the parking area. Now, a lot, a lot of times in that space between the sidewalk and the curb, it's the responsibility of that property owner to maintain it. If there's grass in it or whatever, they're expected to mow it. Um, sometimes people put trees in it, but that's where the fire plugs go. That's where the pedestals for the electric go. That's where the water lines go and water meters go, usually in that space between sidewalk and curb. You know, historically, six, eight feet, something like that, six foot width for the sidewalk and then people's property line. So if there are actually any activity that they're doing out beyond that property line, if the town hasn't inserted any use of it, you have no sidewalks. You have, you know, maybe. you have no sidewalks. You have, you know, maybe there's a fire plug here and there and then the water meters. There's nothing to assert the town's use of that property. So people just drive up and park right in front of their property line, which would normally be where a sidewalk is at. So it's difficult for the, for the property owner to know exactly where their property ends and the town begins. And it's hard for the town to know where their maintenance issues began and end. So whether, unless that property line is defined by a fence, in which case if there's no sidewalk, people are gonna drive right up to the fence. You've done sidewalk projects here and now you, now everybody knows where the, where the town begins and ends. Main Street, it's the same way, but it's the extra wide sidewalk because it's a commercial area. The buildings come right up to there. So at some point, it might be a good idea to, to figure out some way to define that. Or set up something where if people are gonna do activity outside of their property line, it's up to them to find out where the property line is. If they're gonna plant a tree, if they're gonna plant a tree in the, in the town's property, the town probably ought to have some say in it. Because maybe it's in the way of the sidewalk ultimately, someday if you build a sidewalk. So I would say that if someone is gonna utilize that property, they need to know that it is not their property and they need to come to you. So if I was gonna plant a tree on the town property, you'd need to know about it. It's probably okay if it's in the right spot.
You're in the risk of it getting torn down if you do have a good sidewalk.
And understanding it has to be there. The town improvements may disturb that, but the tree then belongs to the town. So it's not it, but it both may belong to the town then.
And could I interject again here, just because we do have some interesting definitions throughout the sections of the existing ordinances that are probably, if not conflicting, a little bit confusing. But there is a requirement for a permit to do any excavation. And that is including anything in the public right of way and the sidewalk. Sidewalk is defined as the space of land parallel to the highways and streets. And so you effectively probably already could enforce what we're talking about. But you would need to look at several different definitions and read the sections pretty closely. So it may be beneficial to look at what we already have and kind of look at if we could amend some of these definitions in a way that make this a little more straightforward. I'm not, I'm not sure that you need a brand new ordinance that is, you know, creating a whole cloth new violation. I think you may be able to modify some of the ordinances you have on the books to fix these problems. But again, we're happy to do whatever, you know, the board feels is necessary. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Because there are a lot of different provisions in here that could apply.
Okay, very good. So we will leave it up to you to come back next meeting or a meeting after with, with your, with your town in terms of maybe consolidating some of this stuff. What do you got?
Absolutely.
No, you know, we don't even have sidewalks on all our properties. A lot of people don't want sidewalks. And again, it's our profits, our right of ways, you know, so.
So do we need to make a motion to allow the attorney to look into this? Because it says that we have to make a motion about this.
I don't really, because we need a motion to do that. But if you wanna make a motion to have the town attorney process, please go ahead.
I, I don't know. That's just what it says on the agenda, so.
And I'm just saying, I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, the other one doesn't say we need a motion.
Okay.
All right, anything else to come before the good of the group?
You informed me.
Are you gonna point that thing at me? Is that gonna go off?
You informed me to start a five-year plan for the parks.
Yes.
And already scheduled for, we're gonna set it up on December and discuss it and then we'll work from there.
So.
Very good. So, okay, very good. Five-year plan. I think that's good. Really good. Yes, Bob?
Just let everybody know that week before last, Melanie and I went to the CML meeting over in Wayne Vista to represent the town. And, and Dola was there and we, it was really well. Well, worth our time to go do that. Thank you, Melanie, for going. And then also too, Paul and I have been working and Aaron on, and we just gave the okay today to our engineer for the, you know, plating out the water sewer for the town-owned property south of town and the other properties to do soil tests. But what they have to do, what we wanna do is because, based on Round Mountains' experiences down there with their wells and things, that the ground may not be stable enough underneath. So when we go and to lay, the, the, the depth is gonna be so critical for the sewer line to be able to go up and meet our existing sewer up at the south end of Third Street. But anyway, so they're gonna do soil tests to make sure that when we go down, it's gonna be down close to twenty feet in some spots. So it's gotta be exact, because otherwise it won't run uphill. So anyway, so that's, so we just gave the engineering company and they're out of Salida, the geo, geoengineering technical thing.
Well, I just wondered where things were. I know you guys had interviewed someone for a part-time planning and zoning position. And I wondered where that stood or what's going on with that.
We interviewed a guy and we didn't have any room in our budget this year for that. It'd be a part-time, half-time job. Seemed to be a knowledgeable person with his background, the experiences and everything. He, he wasn't available this time anymore this year anyway. So we just left it to, to next year and I don't, we'll talk about it in the budget workshop.
I did budget for a part-time person.
I think we need one, Christie, to monitor that job over there to ram around that thing too. Although, potential engineering will be there for the, why they're laying that sewer line. It's really important, as Bob said, because of the depth with some of that thing, it's really important that you do it right. Because you don't wanna be digging down twenty feet to fix it. So anyway.
And the timeline is, is, everything goes according to plan. I'm not gonna start digging holes, digging the trenches until probably, if we're lucky, April maybe, or something like that.
If you're real lucky.
There's this, doing these test holes, there's just three of them. And it's gonna be not to exceed fifteen thousand, so you know it's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars. It's not on our budget. So we're gonna ask Dola if they'll finance that for us, if they'll pay for that. I don't see why they wouldn't because they've already got money and, you know, they've already paid for a big chunk of it. They may have to do a match, I don't know. But Aaron is gonna talk to Randy from Dola.
I, I did, well, I sent her an email, but.
Okay.
Waiting.
Okay, very good. Anything else to come before the good of the group? Okay? All right, very, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Public comment?
A public comment, is it? Okay, good. You've already had your turn. And you bet, well, it's still public. Okay, there was a good report, by the way, from the, from the. Farmer's Mark. That might fit right in with what you're doing, Bianca. That would be great.
That's a community event and we don't wanna, you know, squash anything that they're doing, but definitely I think it can work hand in hand.
Yeah.
That's what we're hoping to do.
Well, I do have a question for Bob and for Bianca. How did it go about the Christmas tree?
Randy has that solution.
Oh, Randy was there too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so what's the deal?
So Neil, Neil really, really, really with CDOT, the chief of police, or no, chief of fire chief and the plowing, did not want it in the road. And so we are gonna put it on the sidewalk. We called, I called Peter at the moment. And he said he gives permission for any overlap on his property line, but we are gonna have to creatively to get like a fifteen-plus foot tree. We will be creative a little bit with, Neil said he was fine with it going out into the sidewalk. But on the edge of the patio, we have to like chop away at some branches and stuff like that. So we, we will do that. I, I just talked to the lovely ladies at the town today to get the permission to close part of Third Street for the block party. But there's a little bit of a, on the application, there's a, we need a certificate of insurance. I don't know how it's phrased. Naming Town of West Cliff for.
Addition insured.
For the, so we're.
You might wanna talk to Sarah at ACE.
Yeah, Sarah was at, yeah, I thought about Sarah. And then I also left a, because Kids Council is involved. And they're sending flyers up to all the kids at school. But Stacy, Stacy from Kids Council said they're under the county. So I left a message for Lucas app to see if the county would do it or if ACE.
ACE is thinking about rape. And that requires insurance. So I don't know what they're gonna do. I just talked to her this week about it, so.
Can I get her number from you in more time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Question.
Sorry.
Mr. Shaw, I put you on the spot. And I remember, and Christie remembers it, all of us here remember. So was, and you were involved, heavily involved in the fire, our fire department. When we did have the tree there on Third Street, was it, was it an issue with the fire department and CDOT at that time, as you recall? Or do you? No, because it was outside of CDOT's jurisdiction. It was back in the Third Street, nearby the Texaco. Yeah. The old Texaco.
Neil says that the pavement line that's at Three, Third Street is two feet from where that supposed manhole anchor for the tree is. And he said that CDOT says their property line goes to where the pavement starts and the anchor for the tree is in CDOT territory. So we didn't wanna really take off Neil.
Yeah. You know, CDOT may have determined that since they need more maintenance, but, you know, the option there is to set it back a little farther.
Well, and ultimately.
Throw a new hole and put a pipe in.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, if there's that big of an emergency, pretty much across the board, everyone said, like, just tow over the tree. But as a group, we didn't want to create strife for an event that's supposed to be creating community. So we just let it go and.
I mean, the fire, the fire department always goes out Fourth Street. So the only thing would be is if there was something on Third Street.
Yeah.
But making a right onto Main and then down on the left on the Third is probably not what would be done anyway. But, you know, if he's, he may have other reasons, I don't know. Okay, thank you. I knew it, I can drill another hole.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Otherwise, this is gonna go on.
Somebody made you already dead.
Did I?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
We're stuck. I have a question that's like.
I don't know why.
Hey, Christie, that's your budget binder.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, last Friday.
So.
Don't forget your budget binder.
It was, it was very.
Of course, it's like bonded here, but it does have perks. They are looking for.
Efficiently.
Now, yes. So I had thought, I said, oh, I may know someone that's very familiar, has experience. I didn't give them your name yet, but I. That was like. She does work for. Yes, I really. So I'll give Kent her name then. And what's it mean, like, to share? What's it mean? That's what they're discussing. So I start with. Sure, yeah, I will. And what's your last name these days? This is gonna help, still, in case I write any of my paintings. Because I saw your card says one name has a weight.
Get the C two and logs. And see, they're basically the same lights.
See the base, think about that, that the sidewalk was just gravitation rather than just brightness, is the amount of light casting out.
Oh, that's happening. It's a glare.
Well, it's not just a glare. It's just half of shadow, almost all of shadow ridge is the one.